To this evening's town board meeting of Monday, June 23rd, 2025. I'm going to, um, we're going to begin the, the board meeting with the pledge of allegiance, if you'd please, Bryce.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I would ask your town clerk, please call the roll.
Supervisor Culpa. Deputy Supervisor Levin. Councilmember Berger.
Here.
Councilmember Zucala.
Here.
And Councilmember Maranucci.
Here.
First item on the agenda is approval minutes from Monday, June 9th, 2025. A motion to adopt those as they appeared in our agenda.
Second.
All in favor? The first item on our, um, agenda this evening is public hearing. It's on resolution 564, uh, 2190 to 2200 Whirly Drive, a bicentennial comprehensive plan amendment. Um, I just want to explain for a minute how this works. Um, so after the petitioner makes the presentation, obviously we'll open it up for questions and comments from the audience. We are, we, this board as policy doesn't vote on land use items the first night of a public hearing. Uh, we actually want to take the time to deliberate. We'll probably keep the public hearing open and you'll be able to submit further comments or questions via email. Um, so, uh, tonight's the first night. Um, we would anticipate that this would go, um, at least into two. It's also, as I understood, it's a bicentennial comprehensive plan amendment. So the way that that works is there's, first, there would be a comprehensive plan amendment. If the town board, if the town board felt that, um, the, the type of land use was appropriate, then the project would move on. The petitioner would have to file for rezoning. Um, the rezoning application would then go through the same process as the comprehensive plan amendment, um, through planning board, planning board recommendation, town board, public hearing. And if the petitioner is successful with the rezoning application as well, um, the final plan goes to planning board ultimately for site plan approval. So this is the first night of probably a few, um, at least a couple. Um, so with that, I'm going to motion to open a public hearing at this time.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And, uh, go ahead, present.
Yes, good evening Supervisor Culpa and members of the town board. Sean Hopkins on behalf of the Appkin Young Development. Also with me this evening is Joe Young and Tom Lewis from Young Development and Patrick Sheedy, the project engineer from Carmina Wood Design. We're here this evening in connection with a request to amend the bicentennial comprehensive plan specifically for the property located at 2190 and 2200 Whirly Drive. The site itself has frontage on Whirly Drive, as you can see on the right-hand side, slightly less than 25 acres in size. It's currently zoned office building district. If, as Supervisor Culpa indicated in his introductory comments, the town board ultimately amends the comprehensive plan, we would then seek a rezoning to MFR 6, multifamily residential District 6. This is the infamous acquiesce site that has a lengthy history going back about 30 years involving rezonings, litigations, sewer moratoriums, et cetera, et cetera. And all of that is now behind the owner and the town of Amherst. Specifically, we're asking that the comprehensive plan be amended figure six to designate this site as appropriate for medium residential designation. It's currently designated as commercial office. There's aerial photograph of the site, just to everyone, uh, just acclimate everyone. Whirly Drive, Bellingham, obviously to the west, we have ECC, Young's Road, et cetera, et cetera. So this is figure six of the comprehensive plan again, currently designates this site as commercial office. We're proposing medium residential. We'll explain the justification for that request. Zoning map, again, showing it as OB. It is important note that if you look at that excerpt of the zoning map, there is a wide assortment of zoning classifications and land uses in that portion of the town of Amherst, which of course is the southeastern portion of the town. So again, as I said, lengthy history, this is what was last, most recently in front of the town. This is a site plan that actually received site plan approval from the planning board several years ago, based on the existing OB or office building district zoning. At that time, what was approved was for very large office buildings comprised of nearly 285,000 square feet. So this is a site that's been designated as appropriate for development for at least the past two decades. We were lucky enough to hold informational meeting with neighbors beginning on March 11th. We also had a second one, um, last Thursday. This is the plan that we presented during that initial informational meeting as well as the public hearing held by the planning board on May 15th. At that point in time, what we were showing was a total of 366 units. We also did include five four-story multifamily buildings, which are highlighted, which are orange stars. The units directly adjacent to the backyards on Bellingham were two-story townhome type buildings with attached garages. There remain that. At that point in time, what we were showing was 181-foot minimum setback for a four-story building from the rear lot line on Bellingham in 55 feet of green space. And that 181 feet, um, greatly exceeds the requirement of the zoning code. Since that time, we've gone back to the drawing board and made a lot of changes. This again was presented to the planning board on May 15th. The planning board did adopt a resolution recommending that this board approve the requested amendment of the comprehensive plan to designate the site as appropriate for medium residential with consideration of the inclusion of commercial and mixed uses and recreation, open space and greenways. The planning board, as it always does, provided you with very detailed findings. Those detailed findings support our request to amend the comprehensive plan and include the fact that this site is ideally located for housing, again, single family on one side, office and multifamily on the west side. Um, also specifically that we have access to public transportation, that we're in close proximity to SUNY ECC's North Campus, the YMCA location, et cetera, et cetera. So these are the findings that are pulled directly from the resolution adopted by the planning board during its meeting on May 15th. So after going through about, Pat would say probably 50 different versions of the concept plan, this is the concept plan that we've settled with. What we've done is number one, we've eliminated units. So we're now down to 332 units and we'll explain why. We've reduced the number of four-story buildings from five, as previously proposed, to three, which are located here. It's important note that that is the western portion of the site that's directly adjacent to an 80-foot right-of-way owned by National Grid. Um, we had meetings with the planning department on both May 22nd and June 5th to discuss modifications. We found those meetings to be very, very helpful. One of the topics that was discussed in those meetings was whether we should include mixed use and ultimately a decision was made, no, at this particular site, probably not appropriate. That would also require some type of commercial zoning. So we wound up with a parcel that is split zoning. Oh, I also want to highlight one thing. So again, I talked about the setbacks last time. Previously, rear yard from the back of Bellingham to the closest two-story building, 55 feet. We've increased that to 70 feet, so 15 feet. And more importantly, the four-story multifamily buildings that originally had a minimum setback of 181 feet, we've increased that all the way to 500 feet. So basically almost two NFL football fields in length, and that's highlighted in this purple area. So as a result of that, all of these units, these three rows of buildings, those will all be two-story townhome buildings, meaning there will be townhomes with attached garages. We believe there's ample market for that. And again, the four-story buildings will be limited and limited only to the western portion of the site. We've also agreed that we'll provide high-impact screening on the east, north and western portions of the site. What we're showing on the eastern portions is a six-foot fence with extensive landscaping. On the western side, again, because we're adjacent to that right-of-way, and we'll talk about another amenity we're proposing, we're showing a berm with extensive landscaping. This is just a version of that plan to highlight where those, where the four-story multifamily buildings are and those setbacks from the rear yards on Bellingham. Um, in addition, we've introduced a linear green space corridor in the middle and a recreational trail connection to Garfield, which I'll show you in a second. So based on those discussions and based on input from our landscape architect, Dean Gallin, who's very reputable from Wendell Associates, we did a couple of different things. Number one, we thought it would be this great idea to have this linear green space feature for the residences' project so that centrally, centrally located green space has a width of 92 feet. We were also asked to consider a recreational trail connection to Garfield, which is an existing paved stub street. We met with the neighbors on March 11th. One of their first topics they brought up was they do not want a roadway driveway connected there. We are not proposing that any, in any way whatsoever. However, if the town deems it appropriate, we provide that recreational trail connection. We're showing a gated emergency access on the back of the site to limestone in order to comply with appendix D of the fire code. And then what we think is the coolest amenity that might be on the table is a recreational trail that would connect all the way from Whirly Drive to Main Street within that National Grid right-of-way. That would provide opportunities for residents to bike, walk, et cetera, all the way to Main Street and all of the amenities the village has. This is not a very far distance away. There's just not a lot of good ways to get there in terms of biking or walking. So that would require approval of National Grid and possibly National Fuel. So that's something we'd like to take the town, take the town to take the lead on, but we're certainly interested in that amenity. Elevations, again, we're only at the comp plan amendment stage, but this is an elevation of those two-story, um, townhome units with the attached garages, which are located, all of these actually goes down to here. And then throughout the site, we have a couple that are five units because of what were left over. Elevation of the three, four-story buildings with 49 units, again, emphasis on vertical and horizontal relief, a diverse range of architectural materials and a more residential style sloped roof on this site. We did make a very comprehensive updated submission on June 15th. I'm not going to walk through it document by document, but that has been provided to the town electronically and also each of you have received a hard copy of it as well. As Supervisor indicated, we're not asking for a decision this evening. So if there are any questions about that submission, uh, we would welcome the opportunity to address them. Informational meeting. So the first one was held on March 11th. We sent an invite letter to each and every propeller within 600 feet. The copy's on the left dated March 3rd. And then Mr. Young, Joe Young, provided a follow-up letter dated March 14th. After all of those series of changes that we made over the course of the past three months, we had a second informational meeting at the main transit fire hall last Thursday, June 19th. Again, an invite letter was sent to each of the propellers within 600 feet. We want to express appreciation for the residents that attended either both or one of those meetings, and we have made a commitment numerous times in writing that as we go forward with the review process, we will continue to keep all interested residents advised. In terms of figure six of the comprehensive plan, this is probably the most important aspect of the presentation. It's important note that it states quite clearly, it's not intended to be a zoning map, it's not intended to be a binding document, it's a document that should have some flexibility to be modified based on changing needs. I think we can all recognize the fact that the demand for office buildings in the town of Amherst is much different than it was five years ago, 10 years ago, or 15 years ago. So while there is a site plan approved for nearly 300,000 square feet, it's probably highly unlikely that if this project doesn't go forward, that that would be built at any point in the near future. Terms of the objectives of the comprehensive plan, I've set those forth in the application, but I just want to note again, this will all be privately owned infrastructure at no cost to the town. We're offering that recreational trail amenity, uh, based on the town's overall parkland plan and policy 39 is directly on point, which says, "To advance the redevelopment and revitalization of underutilized, obsolete and vacant properties for economically viable uses." This is a hundred million dollar project, so we think we're meeting that particular policy to a T. And then the comprehensive plan has a lot of text on ensuring, providing a diverse range of housing within the town and focuses on the fact that the primary residential use in the town currently is single-family homes on individual lots. This obviously would be something different, two different types of products in terms of multifamily use, and I've quoted the text. And perhaps the most important point on this slide is this board, and this board has taken the lead on this, has repeatedly expressed an interest in workforce housing and more affordable housing. Because of the magnitude of this project, uh, we're certainly interested in providing 67 workforce housing units. I think that would be excellently received by the town and its residents. That will require the cooperation of the AIDA, of the Amherst Industrial Development Agency. We're not there yet, but we just want to make that clear. Our intention is to provide that 20% workforce housing units. And I'm not going to touch on this, but there was a detailed memorandum prepared by Roberto Rapaccio of the planning department dated May 7th that explained the planning department's analysis of this request to amend the comprehensive plan. It was very well-written and well-thought-out. And again, it highlights the high vacancy rate of office buildings throughout the town of Amherst and the proximity to nearby uses, including again, the north campus of SUNY Erie Community College, the YMCA, other office buildings, two bus routes, et cetera, et cetera. And then we did recently receive a letter from Mark Romanowski representing the owner of the multifamily projects located directly to the west of the project site. And it's important to note that what we've done here is we've emphasized proximity to the single-family homes on Bellingham. That's what's resulted us focusing the taller buildings closer than the National Grid right-of-way. So we think we've done what we've been asked to do, which is focus on the residential neighbors, the single-family homes. It is also important to note that both of his existing multifamily projects have the exact same designation that we're seeking, which is medium residential. And then finally, I just want to conclude with the environmental review pursuant to the state environmental quarter review act. We have provided extensive documentation, including an updated traffic impact study, jurisdictional determination issued by the Army Corps of Engineers on January 22nd of 2021, that confirms there's no jurisdictional wetlands on this site, a no-impact letter issued by Nancy Herter of the New York State Office of Parks, Recreation, Historic Preservation dated October 4th. That traffic study did conclude that the roadway network, we studied six different intersections, can handle the peak, peak traffic generated during the weekday PM peak and weekday AM peak. That has been provided both to the Erie County Department of Public Works and the town's Traffic Safety Board for further review. And then finally, we did provide a downstream sanitary sewer capacity analysis that demonstrates there is adequate downstream sanitary sewer capacity during wet weather conditions. We will be subject to the town's INI program currently calculated at a payment of approximately $170,000, which will result in some additional improvements. And then the final topic that we're working on is water pressure. We've heard concern from nearby residents that water pressure is not adequate in that area. Pat Sheedy, who's here this evening from Carmina Wood Design, is coordinating with the Erie County Water Authority, and once he has additional information, that will be submitted in connection with the project. So with all that being said, um, that concludes our public hearing. And either myself, Mr. Young, Mr. Lewis, or Mr. Sheedy would welcome the opportunity to address any questions that any of you may have. Thank you.
All right, uh, first from this board. Sure, councilman.
Thank you for your presentation. I have received letters and comments from neighbors who are interested in this. I know you mentioned it, but I want to make absolutely sure I understand it. There have been a number of residents who've reached out to me concerned about water pressure and concerned about sewer.
Right.
You, according to the plan that you've just put forward, sewer will not be negatively impacted.
Right, sewer will not be negatively impacted. Detailed testing was done during more than a half-inch rain event per the requirements of the town of Amherst and the DEC. Pat Sheedy's here this evening, and it did confirm that adequate downstream sanitary sewer capacity exists. That report, I believe, is, or that information has been provided to the engineering department, and hopefully prior to issuing a decision, you'll get a confirmation from the engineering department, your experts agreeing with the analysis conducted by Mr. Sheedy. And then water pressure is a work in progress, but rest assured, we do have to meet the requirements, including for domestic, domestic flow and both firefighting flow.
An- anecdotally, um, the fire company in that area has, um, raised issues in the past with this, with my office regarding
Right.
water pressure and, um, obviously that's, that's something that we still have to find out how.
And I would note there were several of the nearby residents who are also firemen at Main Transit that attended the initial informational meeting on March 11th. So we became aware of that concern at that time.
Sure, um, Deputy Supervisor Levin.
Sean, um, my, mic's not working, so can you repeat the question after I ask it?
Absolutely.
So, um, these are condos or these are apartments?
These are, thank you, these are multifamily units for lease, exclusively for lease.
For lease.
Yes.
What is the range?
Oh, and by the way, the question asked was, are these condominiums?
And then what would be the range for people?
Well, in terms of the, again, keep in mind, we have two different products that we're hoping to provide. In terms of the workforce housing units, um, those would be priced per the eight AIDA guidelines, which are, right now, I believe, based on 2024 HUD information, approximately 1,300 for a one-bedroom, 1,500 for a two-bedroom, 1,700 for a two-bedroom, those get adjusted, or three-bedroom, those get adjusted annually, but the rest will be market rate and they'll probably be at least $2 a square foot. Meaning if you're leasing a thousand-square-foot unit, you'd be paying a minimum of $2,000. And the reality of that is based on construction costs, interest rates, et cetera, et cetera. But I think there's a lot of demand for those 67 potential workforce housing units as well.
Anything else? Why don't we get some audience, um, comments and questions? So when I ask you to come up, when you do, please state your name and address for record, and you feel free to ask questions. If you have questions, if you have comments and questions, feel free to, to address either. If you have questions, we will probably pool, hold groups of questions, um, and then ask the petitioner to address those, um, in a, in a, in a group at, towards the end of the, of the public hearing. Again, I'm not, we're not planning on closing the public hearing tonight. Um, if you just came in, this board traditionally is held land use decisions, um, we don't vote the first night of a public hearing, so. With that, if, uh, if anybody would like to start off, please come forward.
Good evening, my name's Adam Carl from 305 Bellingham. I'm a 42-year resident of the town in the Amherst and Bellingham neighborhood. I'm here along with my neighbors and town residents to expect, to express our strong opposition to the proposed zoning changes of the above-listed property. As a concerned neighbor whose property directly borders the parcel, I believe the proposed changes will have a significant negative impact on our neighborhood. I urge the town board to not move forward with the zoning project as presented for several reasons, including the impact on the immediate area and neighborhood, the impact on our local infrastructure, our quality of life, and the lack of public support. Living in the immediate area, I'm very aware of the pretentious history that this, uh, parcel's had in the past, going from single-family residential to commercial, and now the proposed developer wants to move it to MFR 6, uh, a density. That density is four times the na- density of the neighboring homes on Bellingham. And then previous rezoning approvals in the immediate area, including on George Carroll Boulevard, which that office complex, um, down the street borders, single-family homes, there was a two, uh, two-story deed restriction and 100-foot green foot, green space setback, uh, because the town wanted to conform to the existing character of the area. The first, the proposed change would also place an undue burden on the already stressed local infrastructure, including roads, public services and utilities. Uh, as the petitioner stated, the water pressure area is low enough that you cannot take a shower and run your dishwasher or your washing machine. Uh, being a part of the volunteer fire department that he did, uh, reference Main Transit volunteer fire department in that area, four years ago, we had a major fire that was 1,200 feet from this proposed development, where we had to call in fire tankers from Genesee County to help us fight the fire because the water pressure was so low and so poor. These tankers came from communities that don't have a fire hydrant every 500 feet like our community does. Uh, in the time that our, our community needed these fire hydrants, they had, they were dry. And adding on almost 1,000 additional residents in this area is only going to make it worse. A quick drive around the area at Main and Transit, uh, a new construction by Bliss Construction shows that the, um, cars per residence doesn't really add up. A lot of these homes in the area or apartment, uh, development in the area are, are underutilized and not full capacity. For these reasons, I strongly urge the town board to reject the zoning proposal and seek a lower family residential classification with a reduction in height and density. The residents would rather have an office building as their neighbor. The off, the residents are not upset that something's going to be built, they're upset that they're trying to maximize profits at the expense of the long-term residents and taxpayers. They're also aware of the value of the property and, and it would be foolish to think nothing would be built there. We are just asking for a reduction in the height of the four-story units, the density of the property and additional setbacks from the, the neighboring Bellingham residents. The, it's... Lastly, when I was going door-to-door for my residents, trying to see what their opinion was on this, that I came across, why even try? The devolver's going to get their way anyways. They do whatever they want. Please just restore our faith in local government and oppose the rezoning as presented. Thank you.
Can I ask a question? Sorry. Could I, could you come back up for one second? I, I have a question. So this is again, this, to the point of the, the, the conversation. So tonight's, um, tonight's public hearing is on a land use matter, right? So you're referencing zoning, which I understand, um, and then asking for a reduction in some of the additional setbacks, reduction in scale. Is there an opposition? So, so the first question is in front of us is, is should it be, could it, could you have residential on this site?
Correct.
The second question is then density. So just to paraphrase your comment, are you okay with having residential on the site just to a lesser density?
Correct. I, I can't speak for all of my neighbors.
I'm just asking for you.
In a perfect world, I'd love to have an empty field behind me the rest of my life. I am well aware that it's not going to happen. Residential is fine, but at a much lower density.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Okay, I'm going to ask everybody just, you know, if you, if you feel one way or another on the project, the, the question in front of us, and it's important the board get this right, is a land use question, right? Residential versus no residential. And so that's the, that's the primary thing tonight. It's not the zoning itself, but please come forward and continue to share this good information.
Hi, um, I'm Mary Wolf. I'm at 155 Bellingham. So I'm just out of the reach of this project. However, it is, it will impact me, especially with this little trail that's coming over to our loop. I don't know how it can be called a recreational trail when it's going to be 20 feet long. But besides that, I am not in favor of the density either. If you take the same amount of land that is in our loop, we have 47 houses there and versus these 332 units that are being proposed currently, which will overwhelm the school systems and stuff. The other thing that I added up, I don't know how all of your taxes are done, but my understanding is that whenever we have apartments and things that are leased, they are taxed on the amount that the lease pools in. So you're taxed on that, I, I guess I'll just call it profit of the leases. And if you take the highest amount of rent that they can, that they can charge, which they told us was $3,200, times your 322 units, times 12 months in a year, you get to $12,748,000 as what they would pull in for a lease amount. That's overestimated because not all of those units are going to go for $3,200. If you add up the values that all of the homes are assessed at, if you draw the line across the north end on this picture here and go across Bellingham and Amherst, if you add up the values of all of those homes, they come to $15,273,000. So you can have 47 houses with a tax base of $15,273,000 versus 332 units with a lower amount of lease. Yes, I'm sorry, Mr. Culpa, we don't, we don't understand everything that you want us to talk about. So I'm in favor of residential, I'm in favor of houses, like what we currently have. You should be able to put 47 houses in that spot, just like we have in Bellingham and Amherst. It won't cause too much effect on your school system or your roadways. And I am interested to know what six intersections were studied for not being impacted by the traffic. for not being impacted by the traffic, because I don't know how many people try to go down Young's Road, but I don't know how anybody's going to get down Young's Road anymore if we add all of these units on it, too.
So there, we will, we'll address the questions about the traffic impact after. I'll ask the developer to present that.
All right. That's all I have.
Good evening. My name is Anne Sahana, 281 Bellingham Drive. Residential is fine. Two-story apartment buildings looking down into my property invading our privacy is not. I would like to emphasize the importance of the role of the Amherst Town Board officials, their duty to maintain not only integrity and the quality of life of Amherst residents, but also the safety and well-being of the Amherst residents. I was unable to find a completed traffic study or seeker or environmental impact study for this project. That being said, we have lived on Bellingham Drive for over 28 years, and as the area has developed, the cut-through traffic has increased. The concern is not only the increase in vehicles, it's the speed with which they travel. Does a traffic study consider the cut-throughs? More specifically, the increased risk to our children and grandchildren as they cross the street or impulsively chase after a ball rolling into the street? Have you noticed that many people who cut through do not follow the speed limit as carefully as those who live on the street? One of our neighbors has police monitoring our block because the current cut-throughs do not stop at our stop signs. Mr. Adam Carl mentioned his concern about the water pressure and the challenges of putting out a large fire near our neighborhood. With more than 300 additional units, will any study address the water pressure issue? And yes, I heard that Mr. Hopkins said that they're working on that. It's not just about our quality of life, for example, being able to run the shower and the dishwasher all at the same time. But what transcends quality of life is protecting our property and the people's lives if a fire should occur. The EPA determined that this property plays an important role in water retention, contributing to the prevention of flooding of Ellicott Creek. Mr. Young's plan was to drill holes into the bedrock to drain the water from the property. The water still has some, has to go somewhere. Won't this still result in flooding of Ellicott Creek? Mr. Young's most current plan is to create one large ditch adjacent to the Bellingham owners, besides attracting mosquitoes, with the environmental plan impact study supports such a plan. Is this ditch on the east side of the property large enough to contain the vast amount of water to prevent flooding of Ellicott Creek? A large retention pond or multiple ponds may be needed, which would require less density. Please protect our quality of life, our peace of mind, and our safety. Approve a project with lower density, such as our R3 or R4. Vote as you would want others to vote for you and your neighborhood's safety. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name's Tom. My name's Tom Sahana. I'm from 281 Bellingham Drive. I'm going to be right behind the properties on the east side over there. I just wanted to point, I realized that this is about the converting from R3 or from office to R, to residential. And I agree with Adam with what he said about, you know, we know this is not our property, and it's going to be developed at some point. Residential, we've always thought that that would be a good idea. In the bicentennial plan, which was just updated in the 2020, it talks about availability of housing affordability, diverse housing stock, and most importantly, conserving and revitalizing Amherst neighborhoods. If you put off, if you put these, this is, it's, we should think about this in the form of transitions, as you go from one neighborhood to another. On one side, on the west side, you've got office buildings and apartments. On the east side, you've got, you've got single-family homes. There should be a transition there. And I think lowering the residential setting, whatever it's going to be, to R3 or R4 instead of this R6, the density is going to be incredibly difficult for our neighborhood to deal with as it's shown here. There's these two-story buildings that are right up in the, are going to be looking right over into our backyards. You can't grow trees, 30-year trees, in two years. So that, there's a lot of, there's a lot of woods there that are just small bushes and shrubs at this point. And to say that you're going to have privacy within a short period of time, even in three years that it takes them to build this out is not, is not, it's just inexplicable. Anyways, the most appropriate residential build-out that I think would be, would be a transition from the east to the west, single-family homes against this side. And there are a need for single-family homes as well as this, as well as apartments in our community. There's, I talked to a lot of young people and elder people who would like just smaller homes, like single-family homes, that they can afford. And so, single-family homes to one side, to the east side, followed by a scaled-up apartments with a road in between. That would just look like a community transitioning from single-family homes to apartments. And have the apartments no more than two to three, maybe even just two stories high, to make it, to make it look like a normal transition going from one side to the other. So I'm just saying, you know, if you're going to redo it to residential, please keep the density in mind and keep that, keep that down. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Maria Sahana. I also live at 281 Bellingham, and I'm here to speak today for young adults in the Williamsville area. I'm a third-generation Williamsville resident. I will be getting married next year in the spring and hope to remain living in Williamsville. As a young professional working in Amherst in Williamsville, I want to speak to the housing argument. I'd love to see more housing options in our town, but this project doesn't help citizens like me. These are luxury apartments or condos. They're not affordable homes for early-career professionals, teachers, or essential workers. We need housing that lets people start and grow their roots in Amherst, not price us out. If we're going to build, let's be honest about who we're building for. This development doesn't serve the community, and it especially doesn't serve the desires of many young adults who want to put down roots and build stability for our lives. It serves investors. It gives preference to wealthy developers who are technically not supposed to be building on this once-protected wetland and moratorium property for 50 years anyway. Young people would want to live in houses if it could be more affordable for us. We want to live in, we wouldn't, we don't want to live in apartments or condos indefinitely. We want our own property. We want our own homes to cultivate our own families. I'm aware that even before the 1983 50-year moratorium was implemented, the comprehensive bicentennial plan determined this as R3 zoning. Why would you let developers deviate from this? My only conclusion is that it is to follow the cash flow. Regarding safety, I've lived in Williamsville for almost 30 years. As a child, we hardly had to worry about people walking through our yards at night or breaking into our cars. In less than a year, myself and other neighbors on Bellingham have had at least two attempted break-ins into our cars that can't be in the garage. By building these 300 new apartments, condos, you're only going to increase the traffic and decrease our felt sense of safety. We need to know that you want to fight to maintain our safety. I need to know, as a young woman and citizen living in Williamsville, that you take preference over me and the needs of other young adults here and not over rich investors. What we really want are not condos, apartments, or rentals. We want our own homes. We want our own property, and we want safe environments to raise our new families. I don't think it's a secret how hard it's been for young people to find our own affordable homes right now. Please show us that you want this for us, too.
Hi, thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Gillian Lenhard. I live at 198 Bellingham Drive, and I'm here tonight to speak in opposition to this amendment to the bicentennial comprehensive plan that would change the land use designation to allow for MFR 6. I'd like to focus on one thing, the Amherst Bicentennial Comprehensive Plan, our community's long-term vision for responsible and balanced growth. The plan was not thrown together overnight. It was developed over years with input from citizens, business leaders, environmental experts, and planners. It is meant to be the guiding framework for how we grow, where we grow, and equally important, where we don't. In section 3.2, the plan clearly calls for focusing new medium-density development in walkable mixed-use centers, encouraging redevelopment in already-developed corridors like Snyder, Eggersville, and Main Street, and preserving land that holds environmental sensitivity or commercial value. This is a parcel that is currently designated commercial under the plan, was previously categorized as wetlands, and sits outside the targeted revitalization zones. The proposed rezoning to MFR 6 does not align with those objectives. Let's also address the argument that this is about the housing need. Yes, we need housing, but we need housing that's affordable, attainable, and reflective of our community's real needs. The plan called for 366, now 332, luxury apartments. That's not affordable housing. That doesn't serve young families, essential workers, or seniors trying to downsize. It serves developers, not the public. If we amend the comprehensive plan to insert medium-density housing where it wasn't planned and where it doesn't belong, we set a precedent that says, if the zoning doesn't fit your project, just rewrite the plan. That's not planning, that's reacting. The MFR 6 zoning also introduces potential traffic, drainage, and infrastructure burdens, none of which have been adequately addressed in the proposal. The comprehensive plan stresses that any changes should be considered in the full context of community character, infrastructure readiness, and environmental impact. And again, this parcel doesn't meet those thresholds. We all recognize the need for more housing, but that need should be met through strategic, sustainable growth, not parcel-by-parcel exceptions that chip away at our long-term plan. I urge you to please respect the vision that this community committed to.
Hello. I'm Margaret Roman at 110 Amherston Drive. I'll keep it short and simple. These, based on the plans, the changes, the stress on the school district and infrastructure that was already addressed is a huge concern. In regards to changing the site, office is fine, mixed residential is preferred, or low residential. Just do low residential will integrate the current residence area with a new one seamlessly, an area for kids to play, walk around. Based on the proposed plan ahead of us with medium density, it looks like a giant parking lot with a green space that current residences can't use. So that's my stance on it.
Good evening. Mark Romanowski from Rupp Falls Craft. I'm here on behalf of Windsong Place Associates. Windsong Place Associates is a residential development located to the west of the project site. We realize that the town board tonight is here on the question of amendment to the comprehensive plan. Our concern is that this is really putting the cart before the horse, that there are a myriad of issues that have been raised by the residents around this site regarding infrastructure limitations, density concerns, privacy concerns, et cetera. And yet, the board is faced with a question whether or not it should make the significant amendment to the comprehensive plan. Residential development certainly makes sense in this area, given the surrounding uses, but the density that needs to be addressed. I think the issues related to the infrastructure impacts, density, privacy, et cetera, should be addressed before this board should be really addressing the question of whether or not the comprehensive plan should be amended. Also, there's a lot of loose ends on a project like this, which is not unusual, but things like proposing a pathway when you have to get an approval from National Grid, anyone that works with National Grid knows that that's not something that happens readily or easily. So while the project may have a nice set of amenities, it's whether or not those amenities can be pulled off, whether or not the engineering issues can be addressed, and whether the concerns of nearby properties can also be addressed. For that reason, we ask that the board table this matter until those issues are resolved more fully and this project is ready for further consideration by this board. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Bruce Wizbaum. I'm representing the residents of Windsong Place Apartments. I had an almost three-page letter I was going to read, but I'm going to keep it short. I think the other neighbors addressed many of the same issues I was going to address, but I want to address some of the things supervisor asked a question, would a residential be okay? I'm okay with residential. In fact, I prefer residential, R3, but I would even accept MFR 5, which is what Windsong Place Apartments is. I think the density is too great. Our residents are currently expressing water problems, whether it's a shower, a dishwasher, whatever it is. There are definitely water problems in that area, despite what some of the quote "experts" may say. Also, Sean mentions that we have similar zonings. Windsong is MFR 5, which we are limited to about 20 units, 10 units per acre, 10, two-bedroom units per acre. What he's requesting, MFR 6, is a much higher density, although they're considered medium-density. There are almost 50% greater number of units that he can put on that site. Also, he mentioned that all the neighbors were invited. I can tell you, I never received an invitation, and neither did my approximately 500 residents that are in my 308 units. So I was specifically not invited unless Sean knows something I don't know. Also, he mentions that they're looking for workforce housing. I'm involved in a city project where I think the income is probably lower than it is in the Amherst-Williamsville area. Our studios, that were just with the HUD guidelines on rents, we can charge $1,600, $1,600, I think it is, a month for studio units. He's talking about units that are going to be $1,300 a month to, I'm not sure what he said, but those aren't the same numbers that we're forced to adhere to. Also, when he mentions he's looking for the IDA help, what that means is probably asking for a reduction in property taxes. So I'm not sure if that's being considered. Also, getting the IDA help and property reductions is not fair competition to all the other apartment owners in the area that are paying full taxes. And that's, I don't have anything else.
Thanks.
My name is Gregory Tobin from 295 Amherston Drive. I just want to say, I object to the amendment of the bicentennial comprehensive plan for the purpose of this level of density of units on that property. I just feel that there's a lot of concerns that have already been raised about water pressure, sewage, other concerns, and the traffic is an additional concern of mine for this area. It's also quite busy. When I moved into the Amherston Drive home, there was a two-lane road on Whirly, and now it's a four-lane road, and it's, you know, the entire area is a residential area, and I just don't want it to feel like we're living closer to the transit road busyness that we all know about around the corner. So it's already busy enough in the area, so a lower density may work, but I don't agree with modifying this bicentennial plan for the current level of density that's proposed.
Hi, good evening. My name is Brendan Roman. I live at 110 Emerson Drive. And like some of my neighbors here, I actually also wasn't made aware until very recently of the changes and proposals, and I wasn't one of the residents to get a letter. Normally, I'm very analytical and try to look at the numbers and how things look on paper when I'm reviewing a plan like this. And as somebody who just moved into this neighborhood from Cheektawaga, who waited for, you know, the right house to come on the market so I could be near my nephews and my mom, and it was really disheartening to learn about, you know, the plans that were being set forth here just a block and a half away from where we worked hard to be able to move to. In a couple of meetings we've had with the developers who've been more than nice enough to have us, we've received different competing pieces of information around the motives behind the project, with sometimes it's about school district and how attractive the school district is for folks. And as a parent of a young child, I feel that way, too. But in other cases, when that's a problem, when we talk about the congestion of the school district in Williamsville and how educators we know are telling us that the classrooms are already stretched pretty thin, the conversation becomes, oh, well, only six or seven kids get on the bus at our other units. And so for me, it's not about the numbers as much as it is about the quality of life that a project like this would introduce. So I'll first answer the question and say, as far as commercial versus residential goes, in my opinion on it, I genuinely would not be bothered by a commercial space here. in my opinion on it, I genuinely would not be bothered by a commercial space here. I think that when it comes to having a young kid and no sidewalks in the neighboring area right up there on my street, Amherston, it's concerning the amount of cut-through traffic we already get, and knowing that this particular plot of land has no access from the other side. I only know that the after-work hours, when everyone's starting to come home, it doesn't matter if the roads on paper can handle the traffic and congestion. What I'm concerned about as a parent who walks my son is the amount of folks who are carelessly cutting through and running the stop sign. So in addition to the school district concern and congestion, and what, you know, 600-plus residents in the area would do to our ability to sustain that many students and children, I just wanted to make those concerns known. So thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Because it's come up three times tonight. Can you point to the school district itself weighed in on the stress of the school district?
Say that again, stress of the school district?
The school district itself weighed in on that?
On my decision to move here?
No, on the, people keep commenting on stress of the school district.
Yeah, in a conversation with these gentlemen, we asked, what made this an attractive plot of land?
No, I'm saying, but you've cited the stress on the school district. That's what I'm asking.
Oh, sure, yeah.
So that's coming from principals, admin?
Educators, you know, my sister, for example, works with teachers as well, yeah.
That's fine. I'm going to ask a question of the developers at the end. That's what I wanted to know.
Sure. All right. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Hello. My name is Susan. My name is Susan Roman. I live at 231 Bellingham Drive. I'm a newer resident than a lot of these people. I've been there just over seven years. I moved to Amherst to retire because of what a wonderful town it was. I understand that when I moved there, the land behind me was vacant on a moratorium. I'm not a foolish person. I know that nothing vacant stays that way forever, but I really thought that whatever was to come would be something that could make everybody happy. And the revision on this was, I was happy to receive this revision, but I felt that after all our meetings and conversation, a 10% reduction in size made me feel like our input really wasn't very considered, because it's a monster. Even moving property away a little more, the density, the height, the amount of things going on there, living here now seven years, I see what a cut, we live like it's an oval between Main and Whirly. People cut through there constantly. They blow through the stop signs. One of the neighbors occasionally monitors, or will have a policeman sit at the corner and catch people doing this, and there's only so much you can control. Now, on top of all of this, there are, I've been around the neighborhood, talking to a lot of people. People are not unrealistic. We know we'll have something there. We just want something we can live with. You know, the water and all of that, I'm not going to repeat. You've heard it so many times already. And quality of life, the neighborhood doesn't really feel like it's been very considered. I hope that's not the case, but I would just hope you can appreciate that our community would welcome residential there. We'd even, you know, welcome small-scale commercial there. We know something has to go there. We just don't want a monstrosity that's going to have so many direct effects on what we're doing on the other side of the field. A lot of people who care are not here tonight. They've signed petitions and whatnot. A lot of them feel very defeated from things of the past that I wasn't necessarily a part of, although I researched what they were all about. So I think our entire community would probably be in favor of anything but MFR 6, something smaller residential. I know I would welcome having a street behind me with houses in a row like the rest of our neighborhood has. I'd say, darn, we just lost our empty field, but it's still a community. It's still a residential community where the kids go out to play, and it looks normal. Not all of a sudden putting in, dropping an urban monster in a relatively small field for the size that it is. Now, even more upsetting than that, and what might seem rather petty, is that now today I learned that the revised plan allows for a connectivity trail from Garfield, the dead-end street, into the community that wasn't there before. The plan still shows a six-foot privacy fence, not that that's very private with two- and four-story buildings. The developer mentioned this was recommended from the planning board. Why would the planning board, knowing how upset we are about the size of this community, suggest that they put an eight-foot-wide trail leading up to the dead end of the street? And he further went on to say that it was so that our neighborhood could utilize that to go through their community, to use their other trails to go out to Whirly and Main. Well, one side of Bellingham is Main, and the other side is Whirly. We don't need that, and we don't want that. We are not looking to be rude to any new people that would be in apartments, but we're not looking to have so many more people in congestion and activity that it changes what we do from day to day. We have dead-end streets. Our kids are on skateboards. We don't have sidewalks. So we're not trying to cause harm to this developer. But the truth of the matter is, what he's doing is going to so negatively impact our lives, based on the size and scope of this. Yet, if he picks up and moves on, like he will probably do whether he does this or not, because he has so many places, is just going to move on to the next. All I ask is whoever comes in, please do something we can all live with, because this our community can't live with. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Megan Suzinski. I'm at 136 Amherston Drive. I'll keep it short, because I think my neighbors have pretty much covered everything that I had on my list, between traffic, water pressure overwhelming the school system. I moved here because of the town's reputation for thoughtful growth and not feeling overbuilt. My biggest concern is safety. I have two young children. I live in one of the dead-end areas that were mentioned. We have a stop sign directly in front of our house. The traffic hours early in the morning when people are on their way to work, leaving work, our street is used as a cut-through. There's no if, and, or, but about it. Mainly, people are not stopping at the stop sign in front of our house, not going 30 miles per hour either. I have two little kids who tend to run into the street because we have the dead end there, and I just don't want more of that high density. So safety is my main issue. Also, the proposed amendment claims to address a housing need, but I really don't think it does. I don't think it's helpful to young families starting out, or retirees on fixed incomes, et cetera. And those are my main points. I am against it.
How you guys doing tonight? Good. So my name's Tom Suzinski. I'm at 136 Amherston. I'm just here to keep it short and sweet against the amendment to the current plan. It's, I guess, a question now. I've been living here for about six years in the neighborhood, closer to seven now, and like my wife had just said, the cut-through traffic there is, it's pretty bad in the morning and in the afternoon, and if there's got to be an accident, it just gets even worse. With the amount of housing that's going to be put in place there, it's just going to drastically, you know, increase the issue, which that's not anything that any of these neighbors want. I don't want my kids getting hit by a car. I don't want any of the neighbors' kids to get hit by cars. You know, it's, it's only a matter of time. You start introducing more vehicles, more people, something bad's going to happen. I know, you know, no one in that neighborhood's going to be doing CPR on a kid if they do get hit. It's going to be one of us in the neighborhood. So that's all I really got for you guys. Thank you for your time. I'm not going to be a dead horse.
Thank you. If we've got a break here, may I ask the petitioner, please come up? Oh, sorry. Sean left Don.
Good evening, Town Board members. My name is John Smith from North Long. I'm not involved in any of this process here. It will not negatively affect my property or my way of living. Listening to these people, they made a very, very strong case, if you were listening. That's the big question. Were you listening? I was listening to the fact that the first thing was presented, this is a $100 million project. Tells you something right there, doesn't it? Okay? Tells you where it comes from, comes through the strength, and the political strength of the people backing this. It's a big deal. They have something they want to get from you guys. That's really important, and we should all understand that. We should all understand that the bicentennial comprehensive plan is just that. It's a plan. It's a high-level plan on what we, as the residents of the town, want our town to look like. Your job is to make sure that you get and understand what we, as a resident, want our town to look like. That's why you always use the word "land use," okay? I see here essentially a site plan, comprehensive site plan, a big one. And I also, from listening out there, I pretty much understand what all these people are saying. It doesn't belong here. We all know that. You all know that. It's not really an issue here. It's the point is how much political power and how much money can become bought into this town to bend our town to what we want, that other people want it to become. I understand that, too. It's a big, it's a big deal. So I want to tell you something that's important. How you vote on this will measure you in the future on how you feel about the residents of this town. Whether you want to jam the sound to the throats of the residents and go with this in their face, I don't think that's something I would like to see. It's not the way I want to see you guys, but it's something that's really important. If somebody came up to you and said, we're going to put in an MR or whatever, an R4 or whatever, nobody here would say anything. Everybody here would rejoice. It would go through, and it would be great, but it doesn't have the dollars behind it that's going on. That's what's driving everything. So let's say, the question then becomes, how big a something can we stick in this land to make as big a profit as we can? Your job is not to make that happen. Your job is to do what the residents here want you to do for a bicentennial plan. That's your job. And as I said, how you vote on this will measure you in the future on other projects and other ways here, and how you can be manipulated. So you've got to be able to understand that secondarily. They're, we're going to know you very strongly on how you think, okay? So it's clear. It doesn't make any sense, okay? It's a plan. So these people, I feel very, very sorry for them having to come up here and ask you these things, which should be very obvious to you guys, because none of you would want this in your property, or near your property. You wouldn't even, you wouldn't stand for it. So what is it about what's not good for you that's good for them? I don't understand it. You've got to find a better way. You've got to, you've got to square a circle here and come up with a different plan that makes sense for everybody, and a plan that you would actually say in your own hearts, yes, I'm proud of that. Because right now, I don't think you'd be proud of this. Remember, this is a plan. These people are your residents and your people. You've got to protect them, too. It's not just about money. Help them out. Don't hurt them. Thank you very much.
Petitioner, please come up. Okay. A couple of questions. First of all, so we all did get a new packet, and I think that's been referenced a couple times, right? So traffic impact analysis. Can you go through a little bit about when, how, and where?
Okay, so a traffic impact study was prepared by Amy Dake, who's a licensed traffic engineer of Pasero Associates. That initial traffic impact study was reviewed by the town's Traffic Safety Board on May 7. It was also reviewed by Gina Wilkolowski, the county's traffic engineer, because Whirly Drive is a county road, subject to the jurisdiction of the Erie County Department of Public Works. So we received a comment letter from her as well on May 9. Based on that, Amy Dake, who's prepared traffic impact studies for numerous projects throughout West Newark, and in my opinion is the most reputable traffic engineer in West Newark, went back and updated the traffic impact study, specifically based on the input from the Traffic Safety Board and the Erie County Department of Public Works. One thing she was asked to do by both of them was to expand the study area. So six different intersections were evaluated, which are listed in this bullet point. Whirly Drive and Garrison, which would be all the way to the west, Whirly Drive and Colonial Parkway, which is Ingram Microdriveway, Whirly Drive and Young's Road, Whirly Drive and Spindrift, which is located to the west, Whirly Drive and George Carl Boulevard, and then finally, Whirly Drive and Transit Road. We were also asked, based on input received from the Traffic Safety Board, specifically Chris Regal, the Traffic Safety Coordinator, to take a look at whether there's cut-throughs and drive, or excessive speeds on Oakwood Drive. He provided us with data, and the data that he provided to us from the town indicated there is not a problem. Literally looked at the speed limits, looked at the amount of traffic, and said, currently, based on the town's data, there's not a problem with cut-through traffic on Oakwood Drive. Within that traffic impact study, some of this is technical. There is a wide assortment of relevant information. The first one is that peak generation during the PM, this would generate 103 vehicles entering and 60 vehicles entering. By way of comparison, 284,000 square feet of office space, which is what is currently approved, would generate approximately 400% of that during the PM peak hour, because again, commuters going to large office buildings all arrive generally within about the same hour and leave generally within the same hour, which is not the case for multifamily. It also indicated that there would be no reductions in the level of service at any of those six intersections. Now, I want to make clear, because one speaker said that I claimed there would not be traffic impacts. Absolutely not. It will generate traffic, of course it will, but it will be less than what would be, what would result if the site was developed pursuant to its OB zoning classification. And then finally, and this is her professional opinion, as a traffic engineer with three decades of experience, in her opinion, for purposes of the environmental review pursuant to SIKR, the project will not result in any potentially significant adverse traffic impacts, and the key word being potentially significant. There will be traffic, but again, less than if it was developed pursuant to the already-approved site plan, and the roadway network can handle it. Are there times in that area, the southeast portion of Amherst, where there's traffic issues? Yes, absolutely. We're not taking exception to that, but it does demonstrate compliance. I also want to address, unless there's a topic you want me to address next, so does that address that topic? And again, that, that traffic impact study has been submitted and is available for review.
I was going to say, is that, that's probably, we have copies, but I assume it's published on the website?
It's been all provided to the town electronically, yes.
So it's actually in the agenda package for tonight? Okay.
Yeah, because again, we've updated that traffic impact study twice. If anyone's interested in looking at it, it's dated June 9.
So the next question I had, and this is, there's an assumption here, right? The assumption is that, you know, we've had, I've had roughly eight years of hearing about water pressure issues in that area from fire department. Like, how, how do you propose to answer this question?
Yeah. Pat Sheedy, you want to come up and just explain how you're analyzing demand for water and water pressure? Pat Sheedy's a project engineer from Carmine Wood Design. Again, I want to emphasize, I think we can answer every other topic conclusively this evening. That is the one issue that's still under analysis. With that being said, I'll let Pat give you a quick overview.
Hi. Good evening. Pat Sheedy, Carmine Wood Design, project engineer. Yeah, we've given some preliminary design information to the Water Authority. They are currently analyzing all that. One of the feedback that we did get initially from them is, this area is unfortunately in a higher elevation area in this localized pressure zone, so meaning the pipes in the ground are higher than the surrounding areas, which naturally causes less pressure in the pipes itself. Now, is there anything we can do to correct that, or the county can do that? We're not sure. We're having those discussions right now. But as far as the proposed project, in relation to supply and demand of the water system itself in the local area, there shouldn't be too much of an impact at all, based on the end the initial analysis we've provided them.
The intent to fire suppress the multi-story, or four-story multifamily?
Yeah, so all these buildings on site would be sprinkled, and we'd also have private hydrants on site. And because of the low pressure on site, we would have to have a private booster pump to serve the site.
It's also important that the layout has been designed per the requirements of what's known as Appendix D of the Fire Code, ensuring that there is emergency access throughout the site.
I mean, we may be looking at having to supply public side booster pumps into the area, right? Not just private sides.
Yeah, we're just, I don't think we're there yet. And what Pat's going to do is, once he has that information, again, keep in mind, it's Erie County Water Authority, this jurisdiction over the water system in the town of Amherst, he will package that up in a report that will be submitted to the town.
Fairly shallow bedrock in the area.
Yeah, I believe the bedrock is approximately eight feet in depth in that area. These buildings do not include basements, by the way.
So we have this, so there's some affordability questions that I think you talked to a little bit. Then there's this stress on school districts. So the Seeker document that the town is moving through, I would assume, has been referred to all the local communities, it would include Williamsburg Schools. Is this area entirely, the area, I don't know this offhand, north of Whirly, south of Main Street, bounded by transit and Young's, is that entirely Williamsburg School Districts? Do you know?
It is. It is entirely Williamsburg School Districts. So yes, to answer your question about...
So if I, we talked to the school district, school district will be able to weigh in, they've been supplied a copy of the documents?
Yeah, so the planning department, as it always does, did issue a lead agency solicitation letter dated February 21st, which is located right here. And as you will see, one of the agencies that was provided with a complete copy of that project documentation is the Williamsburg Central School District. To date, I'm not aware of them providing any comments, but I do want to note several things. Number one, multifamily develop, multifamily projects generate far less demand for school aid, for educational services than traditional subdivisions. By way of comparison, Young Development owns and operates the Edgewater multifamily community located on Broadway in the town of Lancaster. I believe that is 232 units, and if you drive by there on a typical day and see how many people are waiting for the bus, or getting dropped off the bus, it's approximately 10 to 20. So it's not a high demand for educational services. We can get you a more detailed overview of their entire portfolio. And second of all, from the towns, from the school district's perspective, this is a huge windfall. I heard some analysis about tax projections, which again, is difficult, but we're way off. This project will be assessed at far more than $10 million. We're talking an investment of, in the neighborhood of $100 million. All the infrastructure will be privately owned and privately maintained.
I just think it's easy enough for this board's due diligence to contact Williamsburg School Districts about Forest Mill and Williamsburg South.
It's already been done, we just have to get the report back. And we may already have it, right Dan? Thank you.
I would also note, the school never comes back with a comment saying, "We don't have capacity." It just never happens, they have to provide educational services, so it's just not within the purview of their review, but they still may have...
The items come up a few times tonight and at least once by email, so this...
Yes, absolutely.
...it's worth asking. And then on the affordability issues, and we talked about what workforce affordability would look like, but I mean, can you talk a little bit about, so you've got, you've got multiple housing types, can you go back to your projected... So, so all the town homes are rent, are lease only, none of them are for purchase?
Right, they're all for lease.
All the apartments, obviously, are leased?
Correct.
And you anticipate the town homes, so two-story town home, what kind of range would you expect for rentals on those?
Joe, you, I'm going to let... According to Joe Young from Young Development Ballpark, and again, remember, this is changing rapidly in today's conditions, I would say $1,800 to $2,000 per month.
Okay, so we have this...
And those do come with attached garages, your own entranceway, it's not, you know, you have the feel of your own unit.
And a percentage of those will be workforce housing as well.
If, if we participate with the IDA, the IDA of Lex to allow us to participate with them, 67 of those units would be workforce housing units. I heard a comment from Mr. Wizbaum that that's not fair. The town has set up that program, providing workforce housing and affordable housing is a challenge not only in town of Amherst, not only in West Newark, but nationwide. I think this town board and the IDA deserve a lot of credit, because you've come up with a program that allows us to make a dent. Is there a program in place today in the town of Amherst, with the exception of your ADU policy, that deals with that issue for single-family homes? No, but again, this board has demonstrated that it's very progressive in trying to tackle that issue.
Okay, so...
I also want to note the price points. Mr. Wizbaum suggested that we'd be able to price studios at $1,615 and still $1,615 per month. That's not the standards that Amherst uses. Amherst workforce housing policy, they have to be priced between 80% and 100% of the AMI, which is an average median income of the MSA, the Metropolitan Statistical Area. And currently, I believe those are approximately $1,350 for one bedroom, $1,550 approximately for a two-bedroom, and $1,750 for a three-bedroom. It's literally a published schedule, and we would meet those requirements.
So I think that there's certainly some areas where there needs to be some more due diligence. Unless there's anything further from the board, I'm going to motion to...
Was there any other questions you'd like me to answer? There was a whole range of topics that were brought up.
Why don't we let him answer the other questions?
I just didn't know if there were anything else that you'd like me to address, because I could address it.
Well, I think that, in order to, in order to get to some of the base questions, right, we really need to, again, the board may have other questions, I'm looking at sort of this repeated water pressure, affordability issue, school stress, traffic impact, the tax question, stormwater study, which again, this is a little bit different buffer area than had previously been shown. So, you know, I, I think that, you know, obviously, I think we're going to continue a public hearing and, you know, it would behoove us to get some of these answers for the next version of this public hearing.
Oh, aren't some of tho, a number of those items are fully addressed in, as we move forward in more detail, when it gets back to the planning board and the planning process?
But they're already underway, right? We're already finding out about water pressure, we're already getting a report back on school stress. So I, you know, again, this is one of these scenarios...
Schools like more students because they get more money.
So again, this is one of these scenarios where...
As an educator and as a former administrator, I can say that. I know of no school district that wants to turn away students.
I, I feel like at this point though, that we've reached a point tonight where we should adjourn to the next town board meeting.
I just have one thing. So Sean, I very much appreciate the amount of conversation that you've had with the residents nearby. I also understand this is a conversation we've had at other public hearings, that the comp plan amendment versus site plan is very different things. However, if we approve this, it allows for the wide range of, so, you know, we heard comments, maybe MFR 5, something along those lines, that would be allowable and only within medium residential or the comp plan. But if we approve this, it looks like we're approving this plan, so you see where the dilemma is. I also know, and I don't know that you and I have had this conversation, but our AMI in this MSA continues to increase. It's over $90,000 right now, which I don't think meets the needs of resident, or workforce housing. I know that's not you, I know we're looking at HUD guidelines and what that is, but the town of Amherst has a very high AMI and it doesn't allow for that. On top of that, I really don't like affordable rentals. I really want people to be able to build that generational wealth. I, my, my issue here is that while I like perhaps the change in the comp plan, if I don't like this plan, I don't want to vote for an amendment that would allow a plan to go forward. And I think that's where we run into this issue, and it's come up several times before, where, you know, I get too in the weeds on the plan, but it's, it's hard to make a decision when I'm looking at something of this size and listening to residents. I am a parent of a school with modular classrooms that were added on this year, so I know what it feels like to go to an elementary school that doesn't have parking for us all to jam into the gym for fourth grade moving up day. So I understand those are not your concerns right now, but I do want to say, like, the whole process is difficult, but it's even more difficult when we're talking about a comp plan amendment that would allow for a variety, even some of the things that the residents said they would like to see or they would be okay with. Approving an amendment such as this, a change to the comp plan, would allow this type of site plan, which out, without some caveats, and that's where I find the issue here. And I don't know that there's a solution, but...
Okay, so I do want to respond. So the question becomes, when you're... So the question becomes, when you're asking for a request to amend the comp plan, why do you show a concept? And my answer to that is very simple, you have to. Because basically, we've heard a lot that, hey, this is just about the comp plan, but it's much more than that. You're also conducting an environmental review of this project pursuant to the State Environmental Quarter Act. Without a concept plan, you can't evaluate traffic, you can't evaluate water pressure, you can't evaluate sanitary sewer, you can't evaluate stormwater requirements. And I do want to note that my client has made a very concerted effort to address the input that's come up. I mean, we literally are showing two-story town homes with attached garages for the first 500 feet from the residential neighborhood. In my opinion, it doesn't get much better than that. I think if you look at any multifamily project in Amherst of similar size and scope, I've never seen that done. So I do think my client deserves a lot of credit. In terms of the wide range of other topics that we heard, in the interest of time, what we'll do is, we will submit something in writing responding to those comments, and I want to conclude with two other points. Number one, if there's anyone here this evening that did not receive copies of the invite letters, you may live without six, outside 600 feet, give us your name and number and email, and we'll follow up. Why was Mr. Wizbaum not invited to the second meeting? He does have counsel, and I didn't think it was appropriate for me to communicate directly with him. I provided his counsel with a complete copy of the updated submission at the very same moment that was provided to the town. And then the final point is this claim of greed, disregard for safety, for profit, et cetera, et cetera. I want to note that, in my view, that's a red herring. Is the applicant interested in making money at the end of the day? Yes, but just as importantly, the project has to make economic sense. Why? Because you have to go to a bank, you have to get bank financing. If ultimately a bank, based on an appraisal, doesn't feel your project makes sense, you simply cannot build it. Everyone works for a living, everyone tries to earn a living, so that whole for-profit thing, I really do think that's a red herring, along with the claim that the residents from this project are going to break into people's cars, stomp into people's backyards, and recap it. Look at any of their projects and that doesn't occur. And then finally, in terms of this connection to Garfield, we added that based on the planning department's input, it's a recreational trail connection only. We don't care either way. We thought it'd be nice for that neighborhood that does not have sidewalks to be able to come on-site and then hopefully access that future recreational trail all the way to Main Street. But ultimately, if the residents don't want that connection, we would simply eliminate it.
Okay, all right.
So thank you.
So again, I'm going to motion to adjourn the public hearing until July 21st.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is public expression, oh, sorry, two development act review actions. The first is Resolution 565, which is a Seeker determination on 3230 and 3238 Miller Support Highway, C 2024-03. I'm going to motion to adopt the Seeker findings at this time.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next is Resolution 499, an adoption of local law to amend the zoning map for 3230 and 3238 Miller Support Highway, C 2024-03. A motion to adopt the zoning amendment at this time.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next item on the agenda is public expression, a motion to open public expression at this time.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I will invite Jane Cox forward, please.
I want to speak about committee meetings that take place, that are town of Amherst committees. There seems to be a conflict this week in the scheduling of these meetings. For Thursday night, we have both the planning board meeting, which has a work session at 6 o'clock, and a 6:30 regular meeting. And at the same time, we have the, what are we calling it now? Amherst Government Financial Advisory Board. And they are meeting at 6:30. Normally, they meet at the North Town Center, but apparently, this meeting will be at the Amherst Senior Center. So the question is, when you schedule two important meetings on the same night, why is this happening? You have any answer?
Actually, I do. As the liaison to AgFab, we do normally meet at 7 o'clock at the North Town Center. But as the liaison, it's my responsibility to reserve the room, and the rooms that we would normally reserve were taken because they're having some kind of tournament there. So I was forced at relatively short notice to find another spot. I found a spot at the Amherst Senior Center, however, the Amherst Senior Center came back to me, we've had AgFab meetings there before, but they've run long. The, they came to me and said, "We're not paying overtime for you guys to have your meeting. So start your meeting at 6:30, and there's a hard stop at 7:30, because they want to close the building at 8:00." I agreed to that, and as a matter of fact, the AgFab meeting will have a hard stop at 7:30 regardless, people talking, whatever, the meeting's got to end. That's the agreement I made with the people who run the senior center. This is just one of those, just one of those compromises we had to make, because the place where we would normally hold the meeting, this, the ice rink, is busy.
That doesn't solve the problem of it being on the same night as another committee meeting. And the fact that the AgFab meeting has been canceled almost every month this year, because they don't have enough people on the committee, and therefore, they don't have a quorum for their meetings, then they can't take action on anything. So the end result is, you go to the meeting, it's been canceled, or they're going to sit there and watch training films, because they can't vote on anything. So they need to have more people on the committee, but they also need to be scheduled when other people can go to the meetings, and they shouldn't be on the same night, in my opinion. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Don Smith, North Lawn. Mike, as you're all aware, your last meeting, you had no quorum.
True.
You're also all aware, there was only one person from the public there.
I'm, yes.
Only one person from the public, you know who that was?
Yes.
Me. Okay. There was another option, I think, which was to reschedule the meeting in a way that made the ability, people the ability to go to both meetings. You didn't take that, that one, for your own reasons, I don't know what they were, but you did it. So I'm not going to be asking you what those reasons are, they're just, you just did it. So that's what's, what's important. The important thing is what you do, okay? You knew you got a problem, you did it anyway. Okay, I understand that. There are times when you have to do things like that. I'm hoping that you did it for a reasonably strong reason rather than a non-strong reason. Because if you didn't, you did the wrong thing. Okay, I can't go to the planning board meeting, I can't, and your meeting at the same time, it's impossible. I physically can't make, make the distance. Okay, so I know that. It isn't just me, it's just me right here, it's everybody else in the town you have to think about, not just the board. It's the people too. The people here, even if only one person goes, you have to think about the public. And what their, what their strategy and what their, what they have to have in the meetings, what they have to do in the meetings, with the meetings. The public needs to be considered too, in your assessment. I'm... I'm of the opinion right now, I don't personally see that has worked its way into a way that I think should have been done. It's only possible. I think there's even more concern about the public and saying, look, if we can't do it now, we'll put it off for another date. Makes more sense to me. So I'm not trying to blame you on anything. I'm just trying to say, use some more discretion for the public next time. Okay? Thank you very much.
All right. And, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
If I may retort, first of all, I'm, as the liaison to the committee, many times I don't know if a committee member is going to show up or not until a day or two before the meeting is being held. So at that point, we believe it's too late to cancel it because it's already been put on the website. There's already been an announcement made. And in some cases, people say, I'm not sure if I can make it. And we don't know for sure if they're going to show up until the very last minute. And as for the number of people on the committee, I'm working with the law department. We're trying to deal with that right now. When we finally get it resolved, we'll settle that and there shouldn't be any more problems with.
I'm hoping there's no more problems.
I'm sorry?
I'm hoping there's no more, I'm hoping there's no more problems. Sometimes decisions are a little bit difficult. And when they happen, it's time to make the difficult decisions. There is probably an option to call it off. I think you should have. And took that schedule. That's all.
I will also add, I don't know from, as a liaison to the committee, I don't know who's showing up from the general public. It could have been you. It could have been 30 other people along with you who would have come to that meeting. And if I call it off, where would I put that? Have I put that on the website? I'm not sure if everyone would get notice in time. I don't know if we'd get notice in time to call it off. Jason, who is the chair of the committee, I do allow him to make those decisions because he should. He's the chair. And Jason said, look, I'm going to hold the meeting anyway, and I respected that.
I'm just saying, I'm not trying to blame you on anything here. I'm not trying to force anybody into taking some sort of problem here. But the point is, the balance of the decision-making issues left the public out. And I understand why with only one person going there. They don't really come to these meetings. And only one person there, it's not that important. I understand I'm not that important to be there. I don't need to be there, obviously. So you could have a meeting. Okay? But as a process, as a technique on doing planning for meetings, you have to give the public a certain amount of place and standing in your decision-making process. That's all I'm saying. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Anybody else? Please.
Good evening. My name's Nathan Moss. I live up on Tonawanda Creek Road, East Amherst. We call it East Amherst up there. I'm attending tonight with my son. He's an eighth grader at St. Gregory the Great on his way to Canisius High School next year. We're very proud of him. He's our oldest. We're attending tonight, he's a, he's a boy scout and he's working on his community, communication merit badge and citizenship in the community. And if you could just indulge me a few minutes, if I could ask some questions about how the board works, just so he has some exposure to it. I asked him if he had any questions. I think he's a little guy.
To talk to him after. We often do some of those discussions one-on-one.
Sure.
Okay, go ahead. So usually we reserve a lot of answers for the end of the meeting, but please go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. So one question is, are you elected, are you direct elected members or are you appointees?
Direct elected.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. And if you're, if you're, I guess my questions depend on your answers, but if you, that's fine. If you're direct elected, are your, what are your, how long is the term? And are your election cycles staggered or does it all happen at once? And, and who, what is the voting body entail for your positions?
Their four-year terms staggered. Three, a town supervisor, two board members, and then two board members two years later. There's a term limit of two terms.
So we are all at-large members, which means we all represent the entire town of Amherst. All residents vote for each of us. It's actually a really interesting time for this project because they're changing the way that our elections are done. And these are the last ones that'll happen in odd years. They will, in the future, happen in even years. So these will be elected to three-year terms for this year's election where you'll see three of our board members are up for election. All of those are currently term-limited seats. So you'll see three new people holding them, whether they're changing their roles or moving on from there. And then they'll be still after that, after these three-year terms, just for this one time, then they'll be on a four-year cycle from there.
Thank you. Are there requirements for you to run? Must you be a United States citizen? Must you live in New York or must you live in the town? Must you live in the districts you represent?
You have to be a Town of Amherst resident.
And you have to be a US citizen.
I see.
And they can be anywhere in the town too. So it includes Gettsville, Williamsville, all of the hamlets within the Town of Amherst.
Okay, thank you. And is the, is the voting population within the town as well? There's no, like?
No wards, no divisions. Yeah.
Thank you.
All at large.
Basic structure. Do you have any questions?
Another interesting thing I would just note for you is that the supervisor, although the supervisor and the executive of the town, they do vote alongside of us. So they're just one vote with the rest of the board, which is different than in a city or in like the governor or the federal elections. So the supervisor well does dictate executive policy and plans from there out. It's still just one, one vote on the board of five.
Thank you.
If you have more questions, like I said, I'm happy to talk to you after. I mean, you can keep asking, but if he thinks of some others.
I know, I'm sorry.
Can people of all ages bring their opinions to the open session?
We've had middle school and high school students come talk during public expression. At one point particularly, a number of them came to us about mental health.
And they do not have to be residents to speak. They have to be related to a town issue for why they're here. It has to be related to the Town of Amherst.
Okay. That relates to another question. There were rules of conduct or, this is an opportunity for our classic American free speech opportunity, but we also saw like rules of conduct. Can those, can those be found somewhere where you could take a look, look at those?
Yes. So they're available on the website. You can find the rules of conduct there. So the First Amendment's super interesting too, if you continue with the voice cuts and have future projects on it. Because this is a limited forum here. It's not the same as like free speech rights where you would out, you know, we limit to Amherst residents or Amherst issues and the amount of time that the speeches, whereas in public and other spaces, you could speak more. You could always email us or set up meetings for anything else, but the forum here is, it's called like limited. I guess probably the town attorney can tell you about a long time since I took my constitutional law class. But there is a limit to the First Amendment rights within this meeting type here.
I see. Thank you.
Yeah, no problem. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll do second public expression if you have some follow-up.
Okay. All right. Anybody else? Please forward.
Bob Durdle, 92 Chateau Terrace. We've had no streetlights for over three weeks.
Yeah, go ahead. Please finish and then we'll.
Just wondering what's going on with that.
Apparently, the aging infrastructure on your street is a problem. The wiring and some other issues. The town is working on it. They're actively working on it. We're a bit frustrated too, but during the changeover, we ran into very few problems. And your street.
Is one of them.
Is a huge one now that we're all changed over, but Chris is.
I like it better without them. So, you know, don't be in a hurry.
All right. And as you know, three-quarters of Snyder has no streetlights. I don't have a streetlight on my street, never have.
So, all right, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anything further?
Good evening, Town Board members. My name is Thomas Frank. I reside at 5403 Main Street. And I want to thank you for my three minutes. And I'm asking the Town Board for a resolution for an intermunicipal cooperation agreement for an LWRP update. The Village Comprehensive Community Plan update of the, that was contained in the 2010 plan called for the interconnection of the Glen Park to the Amherst State Park. And I'm in the process. I've been attending meetings with the, let's see, let's see. Anthony Magliato as far as the Empire State, the Western New York Regional Economic Development. The CFA, the Consolidated Funding Application Project Proposal Deadline is on the 30th of July at 4:00 PM. For the Village of Williamsville, Town of Amherst, New York Central Park Greenway Cultural Heritage Preservation is a part of the 34-mile Niagara watershed greenway. And it extends to Fort Niagara. And that the Elocket Creek is the lifeblood of the local built environment infrastructure. Of the interconnection of the Anandaga scarpment with Main Street. And Elocket Creek is a strategic cultural heritage geographic location in the northwestern New York state. As far as the north and that the 1.2 square mile Village of Williamsville was incorporated in 1850 to connect Elocket Creek to the Erie Canal, which is going through the bicentennial process. And that the limestone quarries that produced the concrete in the Williamsville Water Mills that was transported to Lockport to complete the canal. And that the, what's interesting is the, as far as the, the American Philosophical Society, which was the origin of them.
Okay, Tom, you can come back, come back up after.
Let me just finish. The electricity came from the Williamsville Water Mills. The Elocket Creek is connected to the Niagara River Greenway. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yep.
We're looking at a $10 million capitalization of a five-year development project. And that it extends through 2050 and it's connected to the Niagara Power Project and the Erie Canal. And this was not implemented in Walk the Villages as far as the traffic on Main Street. So we're going to take care of it in this lifetime. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm looking forward to it. Whoops, excuse me. Oh, and I spoke to Jeffrey Sowalski, a landscape architect regarding the interconnection.
Thanks, Tom. Yep. Thanks, Tom.
Excuse me, I beg your pardon.
Close public expression.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is consent agenda. I'm going to ask the town clerk, please read tonight's consent agenda.
Councilmember Berger, one. Town Attorney, two, three, four, five. Town Clerk, one, two, three. Central Alarm, one. Controller, one. Contract Compliance, one, two, three. Engineering, one, two. Human Resources, one, two, three was withdrawn. Four. Sewer Plant 16, one, two, three. Under Communications, one was consent, two received and filed, three referred to attorney, and four referred to attorney.
So just for scouts in the room, consent agenda, we go through each item in work session. Assuming that everything's in full consent, it goes into a consent agenda, we motion that as a single motion. A motion to the consent agenda at this time.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
There are items we can't put on the consent agenda. The first of those is resolution 567. A townwide road striping bond in the amount of 100,000. I'm going to first motion to adopt the seeker findings associated with the project.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So again, so on the townwide striping bond, I will motion the resolution and adopt the bond.
Second.
On the question, I would ask our town clerk for a voice vote, please.
Supervisor Culpa.
Yes.
Deputy Supervisor Leaven.
Yes.
Councilmember Berger.
Yes.
Councilmember Zucala. And Councilmember Maranucci.
And with that, I'm going to motion to open the second round of public expression.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
They have anything else? Go ahead.
Reintroduce myself. My name's Nathan Moss. We live up on Tonawanda Creek Road on East Amherst. So we, the topic, the very hot debate topic, we didn't know we'd walk into tonight. We just came for a meeting and we saw it on the calendar to hit the requirement in time for summer camp out at, it's going to be in Ohio. And the rules, the reason Ohio's going to be a nice place for summer camp is the rules for shooting shotguns and rifles are different in Ohio than in New York. So younger, younger scouts, it opens, it opens up a little bit more to younger scouts. So that's very attractive for our, for our youth membership. Anyway, so we'll be, we'll be in Ohio for summer camp. So one of the hot debate topics was the, was the residential rezoning question.
No, sorry. Comp plan amendment.
Comp plan amendment.
Mistake, yes.
And you're focusing on a very specific question of that change amendment. And what kind of came to mind is I served in the Navy active duty for 10 years and we've lived in neighborhoods all over the country, all over the world, whether it was on-base Navy housing or housing in the local civilian areas outside of bases and including overseas in Japan. And one thing yearly that really made a place feel safe and great and welcoming and friendly was the feeling you got on Halloween night when everyone's out walking, house to house. And you're seeing people that live nearby visiting. And I would ask the board and everyone to consider a vision, the vision of our favorite Halloween movies from the 80s and our experiences on a Halloween night, maybe in that decade, when it was feeling, you know, safe and residential. Have heavily, single-family house kind of residential feeling. So I thought I would put in my thoughts and opinion on that. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, anybody else? See none, going to motion to close public, or close the public session, public expression.
Second.
All in favor? And I'll motion to adjourn the board meeting.
Second.
All in favor?